They want to go to class, but it's like I'm going to be.
Short guys.
Short guys. So I figured if I get one. Because they can only work so many hours, you know, so the days. One day I might have four of them and then it'll go down to the two. And I think that starts in October. But I want to have something together by the.
What's happening? And what did you say? Oh, yeah.
Do you still know them?
What's going on?
Katie, I'm going to request addition of this. John, did you want something to run by? Like, this is your.
Yeah.
Do you want to add it to the agenda or do you want?
Yeah.
Okay.
Katie's got to have hers added.
Yep. Was it sent to council? Do they have this?
Hope we got sent. I can explain it to them.
All right, council, we're going to need the mics green. Council, may we get those mics green, please? We're at 30. Everybody green? All right, at this time, I'd like to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to our members of public that are here in person and to those that are tuning in via our broadcast options. And thank you, council and department heads, for being here for this evening's council meeting. And with that, I'd like to hand it over to Clerk Tomasic to please call roll.
Schumate?
Here.
Cox?
Here.
McNabb?
Here.
Molnar?
Here.
Valentine? Walden?
Here.
Wood?
Here.
Council, we'll be looking for a motion to excuse absent member Councilman Valentine.
Motion to excuse Councilman Valentine.
Second.
Second by Cox. Katie, did you get it? Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Council, members of public, we have our published agenda this evening. Council, we had two requests for additions come through, one from Clerk Tomasic and one from John here, sitting to my left. I'd request your motion to add the first item. This was sent to you electronically. This is Clerk Tomasic's item, which is adding electronic recycling to annual shred day. Council, with your motion, we could add this to Clerk Tomasic's agenda as an item A.
So moved.
A motion by Molnar to add electronic recycling and a second by Councilman McNabb. Council, any discussion on this matter? I have a hard copy here for anybody that doesn't have the virtual reference already printed out. Clerk Tomasic will have you call roll whenever you're ready.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Motion carried. Clerk Tomasic, that'll be your addition, item A. The second is from John. John, do you want to maybe give a little background on this one?
Well, I had a, in my packet, I had a quote in there for testing some water meters. And I revised it to include another one with recommendations on why we want to do it. Larger meters should be tested every year.
So, council, this is more of a revision. I don't know if it warrants a revision to the agenda, but I just want to make sure you're aware of that. Any questions, council? All right, so now we have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Molnar? Is there a second? Second by Walden. Council, any discussion on this agenda beyond the addition of Clerk Tomasic's item A and the revisions by John?
My only question is if we have any, I know we talked about financial data associated with the administrator position. Do we have any of that backup material to distribute?
I forwarded via email the information received from Nate. Maybe we'll get a hard copy printed.
Okay.
So when we get to that discussion, we can reference that hard copy.
Perfect.
Any other questions, discussion on the agenda? All right, Clerk Tomasic, I'll have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Fantastic. That will move us into our public comments. As you all know, this is an opportunity to hear from the community and any members at large that are here to join us today. So with that, I'd love to open up the podium for any public comment. I do know we have a presentation after this public comment by International Wildlife Refuge Alliance. I know members of the senior alliance are here. If you want to address council, I know you had a chance to speak with some members offline. But, public, the floor is yours. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Is there a time limit?
We are respectful of you delivering succinct information as succinctly as possible.
Okay, very good. I'll be succinct. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to come to public comment today. My name's Jason Machieski. I'm the CEO at the Senior Alliance, which is your area agency on aging. We cover the 34 municipalities in Western Wayne County and the Downriver area. I'm joined by Amanda Sears, who's our chief community impact officer today as well. We're here to talk about what we call the community match amount. Every year is your area agency on aging. We submit to our 34 municipalities what is more or less an invoice for a community match amount. And I believe here in Gibraltar, that is $531. That represents the percentage of older adults in our overall service area of just over a million people to help us with some of the matches that we are required to make to draw down federal funding. We have some data sheets today that Amanda has that shows you some of the impacts, such as the over 6,200 meals that were delivered in Gibraltar in fiscal year '24. And I think one of the interesting statistics I'd like to point out is the demographics in that there are more people age 65 and over than there are K-12 students. And that is a nationwide trend that is occurring. It's actually already occurred here in Gibraltar. Just puts a little bit of scale when you compare the two different populations. We use these funds, again, as matches to draw other funds down. They're also unrestricted for us, so it helps us. Maybe if we're doing a project or something like that, we can use the unrestricted funds. The overall pot in total is $100,000 across our service area. So you have less than roughly half a percent of that total here in Gibraltar. I know probably you can't ask questions in public comment, but we'd be more than happy to have any separate meetings or address any agenda items that might come up in the future on this item and to answer questions about the match.
Yeah, I know, council, they had reached out following our last meeting in context of the match. So I want to make sure that they had a chance to join public comment and address any questions. And if you all want to take any questions offline, here has resources to do that.
Mayor, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any additional members of public that wish to address council?
Hi, Michelle Ossendorf, 30342 Adams. I'm not here about stop signs, so you're probably happy about that. I would like to, as a physician, say that I use them every day, and I wish that you guys would really consider supporting $500. That would be wonderful. Thank you. My other comment is I know that we have a election coming up. And I know that other cities actually have bios or some sort of information on each person that's running to kind of give the public, who is basically voting for your job, to let us know why, why you are a good match, what you have to offer, those kind of things, instead of it just being, I don't know, I guess, a guessing game in some ways. Because I have tried, and I know other friends of mine in the city have tried to find information on people, you can't really find it. So just wondering if that is something that can be done, like other cities do, and if not, why not? That's my only comment.
I really appreciate that. It's a good turnout this year on the individuals that will be on the ballot. So I would highly encourage any individuals on said ballot to make sure they put a bio together to have the community better understand them.
Would it be appropriate for the candidates to submit a bio to be put out in the next newsletter? Or is that inappropriate behavior on behalf of our city? May I ask a question for Anthony?
I actually would have to look at that because usually it's an instance where if someone is running for reelection, then they can't use time, obviously, to promote their candidacies. But that's a different scenario where it'd just be general bios of people running, I would assume, for first time. Is that the question?
Correct.
Yeah. Off the top of my head, I don't know of any restrictions on that, but let me confirm.
Okay. Yeah, you know, it's a good thing, like to what our mayor said. You know, it was only four or six years ago where we didn't have enough people running for the positions that we had. So the renewed interest in serving is terrific and hopefully that information can get out in some way, shape, or form.
Thank you. Any additional comments for council? All right, well, what a great segue to our next agenda item, which is a presentation from our partners at the International Wildlife Refuge Alliance. If you don't mind properly introducing yourself, and then the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. My name is Joanne Gagne. I am a board member on the Detroit River International Wildlife Refuge Alliance. The International Wildlife Refuge Alliance. It's a mouthful. I would like to also introduce two of my board members who are here present today. We have Bert Urbany and Ed Smith. Bert has been a long-term member on our board, and Ed is a more recent member. I personally have been on the Board of Directors for about 11 and a half years. And we're here tonight to kind of reengage communities in the area of the refuge and to talk about an upcoming event that is really important to the continuation of our mission and vision for the refuge. So really, again, just kind of, I'm sure all of you know about the Detroit River International Wildlife Refuge, but for folks at home that may not. The Detroit River International Wildlife Refuge is the only international wildlife refuge in North America. And it so happens that it's right in our own backyard. We are so fortunate to have this facility, you know, right at our fingertips. And with that also comes responsibility to support it as well. IRA, which is the International Wildlife Refuge Alliance, of which I am a board member, is the official Friends Group of the refuge. And our role is to support the refuge by raising funds, engaging the community, and advocating for the protection and growth of the refuge. As a federal agency, the Fish and Wildlife Service cannot raise funds, cannot advocate on behalf of, you know, for the refuge. And so that's where the Friends Group, the community, comes in to help to support that. And of course, you know, this year has been really tough with budgets and things, with staffing challenges. But we're really so proud of our staff at the refuge with what they have completed. They continue to do some great work for the community. They do the field trips, public programs at the gateway, engaging the community with the visitor center. The biology team has done a lot of habitat restoration and things that really benefit all of the communities in our area. And so our mission is to support this work and continue to advocate on behalf of the refuge to keep that local conservation and recreation resource protected and open for all of us to enjoy. So that brings me to the reason that we're here tonight, is to gain support for the refuge. And one of the big things, again, one of our big challenges and roles of IRA is to raise funds, to help support some of those great programs that the refuge has. So we are here tonight to invite you to the 19th Annual Benefit Dinner, which will be held on Thursday, September 25th, from 5:30 till 9:00. And it's going to be at the Silver Shores Waterfront Venue in Wyandotte, right on the Detroit River. If you have not been there, it is a spectacular, beautiful venue. It is, this event is so important to us because it is our largest and most important fundraiser. It really helps us secure our budget for the following year. And it's also a chance for the community to help us and to ensure that the refuge is continuing to be supported. So some of the event highlights, it's, again, it's at the refuge, at the waterfront venue on the Detroit River, beautiful setting. You'll have a delicious dinner, desserts. There will be a live and silent auction. We'll have games of chance, and there's going to be a cash bar. But really, it's a chance for everybody to come together and celebrate the accomplishments of the refuge with a yearly update. And also, we're so excited that we, the alliance, we, this past year, spent a lot of time in developing a five-year strategic plan for our Friends Group. And so we will be unveiling that there as well, so that the public will know exactly what strategies we are using to achieve our goals. So it brings us to what are the goals of our event? Is, we, our goal is to sell this event out with 400 seats. That has not been done in several years. Since COVID, our numbers unfortunately have been very low. And again, being this is our biggest fundraiser, we really want to get back to that sellout. And so, again, encouraging the public to participate. We would like to secure business and corporate sponsorships. Again, the more money raised, the more that we can do to support the refuge. And just like this little guy on the photo reeled in that fish, we would like to reel in new attendees to our annual benefit dinner and engage a new pool of refuge supporters and conservation leaders. And also reignite those that have participated and supported us in the past and maybe for whatever reason just kind of fell off. It's like, well, the visitor center is built and they no longer need my support. And that is so not, that's the case. We actually need it more. So again, re-engaging the community to participate. So this brings us to our challenge. We are going around to all of the communities that are part of, that border the refuge, challenging our civic leaders, our businesses, our community members at large, all the communities that neighbor the refuge, to ensure that your community is represented at the dinner. We would love to see every single community that is dotted along the refuge participate and be present at this event. And we really want to make it known that the city of Gibraltar is, you know, supports and stands with the refuge. We're calling you to be a visible championship for the refuge. And while your presence matters, it demonstrates leadership and commitment to conservation. It inspires your community and reinforces our regional collaboration and partnerships and secures the future, most importantly, of the refuge, which we all benefit from by, again, being right in our own backyard. So how to participate? Well, buy tickets or sponsor a table. Invite others in your community. I think that's most important, is word of mouth. We really need your support to get that word out, that this is a major event on behalf of the refuge. And so that will help us. We can also assist us with our silent and live auctions with different donations. If you have a business or know of something that, hey, I'd like to donate this toward a silent auction, please let us know. One of the things we're hoping is maybe we get a taste of Gibraltar as a basket or something, or, you know, so we're going to be asking the different communities to do that if possible. But most importantly, spread the word through your networks. I'm only one person. You know, our board is a member, I think we have nine members. We're a small board. We really need that community engagement in order for this event to sell out and for us to reach our, and exceed, we're hoping to exceed our goal of $75,000. So that's going to take the entire region community to be involved. And so you can purchase tickets online. The website is www.iwralliance.org to reserve your seats. You can also contact Nicola Flore, who is our executive director. Her number is on the screen or email her. And I'm also available. Again, there's a lot of different sponsorship opportunities. I do have invitations available that I will leave with Katie so that she can distribute those. But to the people at home, if you have a business or if you're interested, this is a wonderful opportunity, if you're not familiar with the refuge, to learn about the refuge. And again, it's just a really fun night as well. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Just want to thank you for being here. I had a chance to go to the visitor center a few weeks ago and walk the property. Appreciate everything you're doing, and I put it on my calendar to be there for the dinner.
Wonderful.
Council, any questions? Well, thank you all.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Yeah, Clerk Tomasic, if you can leave that information with her, please. I think one of your goals of accomplishing visibility, I think we have a Facebook recording that will live in perpetuity on our website here for this meeting. And we'll work to make sure we have flyers available for parties that are interested.
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm sorry, I just thought, is there something that we can do from a board perspective now that would be helpful to you? Or is this, is it simply using our resources to help network it and support it as individuals and?
That really, we're hoping to see all of you at the dinner and support us through getting the word out through your networks. If you have, you know, you can donate a prize to the silent auction. But again, we just really want people in the seats and to really learn about the refuge and support us because the refuge was built on grassroots effort by the community. And we still rely on that community support to, you know, to make sure that the refuge continues.
Yeah, and our city is probably the biggest beneficiary of that refuge. And it's, I mean, we are wholly supportive, you know, of the efforts to continue there. So I'm sure that we'll come out and support accordingly.
Wonderful. Looking forward to seeing them out there.
Excuse me, how do you go about purchasing the tickets?
So there is, you can go online at, oh, I don't have that.
It'll be in the pamphlet there?
It's in the pamphlet, yes. You just fill that out and send it in. That's, you can, you can do it.
I didn't see that, so thank you.
You're very welcome. And again, the website is, well, it was in the presentation. So hopefully the people at home can rewind.
iwralliance.org.
Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, please.
Hey, that's Joanne, attending with her today. I know many of you know me. I'm a former supervisor of Ralphstown Township. The reason I got involved with the refuge is because it touches a lot of what's important to me as a member of the Downriver community. And I was glad to partner with you and a lot of other mayors and our concern about the Detroit River, the Huron River, and we're still working on projects there. We can get grants to go forward with that. This is important because we trained a lot of people to care for our environment as far as the river is concerned, the Huron River, also Lake Erie. And when you think about this, the fishing, the tourism, and all of that is important to all of us, okay? Lake Erie is 21% of the world's fresh water, 85% of North America. So what happens there is also a part of what happens with us. And I'm looking forward to working with them and improving our conditions, enhancing it, and helping all of our property values by what we do on the river. Because there's a lot of work to be done. There's a lot of sedimentation and things that have eroded over the years. And you guys have been great partners. I've been able to give you guys a call and clean out some of the lily pads. We actually need that again. But thank you so much for that. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you, and it's good to see some of your faces again. Thank you.
Likewise. Thank you. Any additional members of public that wish to address council? Please.
As long as three of us are here, I might as well say something. My name is Roberta Bert Urbany. I'm the secretary of IRA and a resident of Rosel. So Joanne mentioned this as a challenge, and so I'm thinking, well, and you were wondering what the board could do. So if we consider this as a challenge and see, you know, how many folks we can get out from each community. It's easy, you know, make a spreadsheet and just make little notches of how many folks from each community. And then IRA prints out a, well, we electronically send out a newsletter every month. And so, you know, after this, probably, you know, in the October issue, we can do a report on how many. Do you guys call yourselves Gibraltarians? So how many Gibraltarians showed up, you know, compared to?
Or gibrats, either way.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm not a native Downriver rat, but I did hear about muskrat being a delicacy.
Yes.
So that's certainly something.
We're scrap life.
Well, I like to see them. I've never tried one, but I know Johnny. Kolokowski. I remember him from the days when the refuge was getting started and the Friends of the Detroit River and, you know, just what it took to get the refuge saved from being developed. And, you know, and now we're so far into the future, the visitor center was built, the fishing pier was built, but we still carry on. So thank you so much and hope to see all of you there. And we'll be checking numbers and addresses, too. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Any additional members of public that wish to address council? All right. Oh, please. Oh, yeah, please.
Tina Kuzma, 30495 Bayview. I watched the gentleman, missed his name.
Nate from Double Hall?
Yes.
Yeah.
That is assisting with that. So I did see a lot of information covered, which is good as far as character of the person that we're looking for.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate we're having such a hard time nailing that down. I didn't see it being spoken about, the accreditations that we require, certifications, so on and so forth. I think that's probably a lot of what our issue has been, that we require a lot for a small community, for them to play pivotal roles in so many different things.
Appreciate that.
In contrast to what we're paying. And I do feel like lately, you know, with the audits, and then we just spent $13,000 on him. Was he necessary? Because I do feel like what we require and what we're offering is paid. I think we kind of saw that in the pool we were getting, because a lot of people were coming here without those accreditations, right? So you all know, if you're applying for a job and you have master's degrees or you have licensures or whatever, you're going to want to get paid for those. And I feel like we kind of have a high expectation, don't we?
It's perfect timing because we're talking about salary in my report this evening.
Are we? Okay. And could we have maybe just targeted that more and saved the money on him?
I think there's so many other variables that are at play here beyond that. I think it's an oversimplification of the situation. We discussed it at our previous meetings and had a lot of discussions around council of doing this right, not rushed, and the small investment that is, keeping in mind, we're not paying a city administrator actively, right? So in theory, we're at a point where we're not shelling out that paycheck as we speak. But big picture, we want to do it right, not rushed. We thought the third-party expertise helps us get more confidence behind our decision. And it also comes with beyond the hiring process, tapping into additional pools of applicants from their other cities for which they highlighted, executive coaching and onboarding, a guarantee that gives you financial assurance as it relates to your decision process, resources and education across council. Even the session we had today, I thought was very helpful and informative. So a lot of other invaluable, I would say, impact and value in the equation here, but I hear where you're coming from.
Okay. And he gives the guarantee, his company?
Yeah.
As to if that doesn't work out?
I don't recall the specifics of the contract, but something along the lines of a six-month component in the agreement, scope of work. Any other comments? Great. Well, very informative presentation. Thank you for the public comments. And that will turn us over to our consent agenda. For a consent agenda, council, we have items A through D. Bill's reference number three, payroll number 970 and 971. payroll number 970 and 971, C, City Council Public Hearing Minutes of 72825, and D, City Council Minutes of 7825. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda items A through D?
Motion to approve a consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by McNabb, any discussion on consent agenda? Clerk Demas, we'll have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Schumate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Motion carried. That will bring us to our communications for which we have done this evening, so I'd love to turn it over to my report. Counsel, my report is items A through C as detailed in our agenda. Let's start with the first one. Counsel, I want to rewind the tape a little bit here. Given our transition away from CE Rains as our city engineer, as well as the transition of a new water license holder, which has been executed, we had a discussion in our last council meeting, and we had an individual named Scott Lockwood, who's the EVP of AEW, come and do a little bit of Q and A with counsel. As a follow-up, you tasked me with making sure we had a service agreement beyond the broader proposal that was put forth by AEW. That service agreement was provided to you via email and in your, obviously, preparation information for tonight's meeting. I also had Anthony, our city attorney, look at the agreement to make sure that he was supportive legally, which he is. So, counsel, I'm here to ask for your motion to authorize the interim, key word, service agreement with AEW to provide engineering services on an interim basis for our operation. Couple of things that I think are important there. One is, we now have a quarterback in John, and obviously counsel expertise on making sure we're leveraging that agreement appropriately. Number two, as I mentioned at our last council meeting, our building department requires this support for day-to-day operations, site plans and plot plan reviews, so there's a day-to-day operational element. But more broadly, John can attest this probably more than anybody here, that we have a lot of strategic infrastructure projects that also may need differing levels of support from an engineering perspective, so.
Yes, we do.
So, I heard, yes, we do. So, counsel, I'd be looking for a motion to authorize the service agreement that's been reviewed by our attorney and obviously provided to you. Again, it's interim, so what I'd ask counsel to think about is, this satisfies our immediate needs, but we want to, I know discussed last time, a request for proposals for broader engineering contract for the long term. And obviously, even Councilman Mulner and us discussed earlier in our special meeting around the structure of that position more broadly. So, that's the background, service agreement was provided and endorsed by Anthony, I'd be looking for a motion to authorize the interim agreement with AEW. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to establish an interim agreement with AEW.
A motion by Walden, is there a second? Second by Councilman Cox, counsel, any discussion on this matter outside of the background later?
The discussion is that this is an internship, right, or a stopgap, if you will, but I want to stress the fact of getting the RFP out for these engineering services as quickly as possible.
Absolutely agree. Perhaps something we can target at our next meeting, and John, I want to make sure we're partnering closely with you on that from a need perspective.
Mayor, may I?
Judge Rafanti, yeah, please.
Just want to bring counsel's attention that the rates here, if you compare them to what we've had, or some of them are doubled. It's very expensive, so in the interim atmosphere that you're looking at, I'd make it quicker sooner than later so we can get some competitive prices here.
Agreed.
I mean, they're an outstanding firm, no question about it, but again, pricing-wise, again, we'll stress in the finance area to get, whenever we engage them, to make sure we have the task purchase order accompanied and with the right approvals. But I think counsel, if you took our previous engineers' rates and compared them, you'll be astonished by some of the pricing. Whether that's competitive right now or not, we don't know, so until we get the RFP out and get interim quotes.
I think it's a really important point, thank you for raising that.
So, I want to make sure that we're able to understand how much we're billed, be able to compare it and agree that we're approving the right amount for payment here. So, there's no, if I read this correctly, there's no lump sum amount for them being our engineer, there's not a fixed monthly retainer?
Anthony, can you advise on that? That was not something that I'm aware of in the.
No, they're going to bill hourly, and whatever work they do, it's going to be at the rates that are attached to the schedule. So, from my side of things, legally, the contract is sound, but there's a lot of administrative things that need to be decided, and scope of work that's in it, that's all administrative things that, I don't know who the right person up here would be, I don't know if it's Mr. Sant or not, but that's where that input would need to come from to say, this covers what we want, or it doesn't cover what we want.
So, I have a question on design fee, which is page, well, it's part of Exhibit A, so, schedule of fees, where design fee for Gibraltar projects, less than $200,000, it goes hourly, $300,000, it's eight. So, I presume that means if we perform a project that costs $305,000, they're getting 8% of that, and the percentage goes all the way down to 5.5, because I assume that's percentages.
That's correct.
Yeah, right.
The higher the project, the fee or the percentage goes down, but you're also going to have to be aware of what that fee includes.
Agreed.
So, there are, you know, construction fees beyond, as construction takes place, aren't involved with that fee.
Yep, 100%. I think the critical element here is, like, John and counsel, and I'd like, you know, Councilman Mulner, I'd like you to lean in here, Councilman Cox, I want you to lean in here, Judge Rafanti, you all have intimate expertise here. As we think about the necessities for the operational partnership, how do we make sure that it's very clear and directive and very cost-conscious in regards to this interim? And then on the next council meeting, August 25th, we can look to RFP this so that we can go through the competitive process and obviously negotiate a longer-term deal.
Yeah, maybe in the interim, find out who the point person is going to be from Scott Lockwood, and.
Perhaps a kickoff meeting, if counsel so chooses to authorize, so we can be very clear on the expectations of.
And maybe at that point, if counsel's open to it, you could even maybe discuss a retention fee basis on questions that John might have in his daily operations.
And if you recall, yeah, when he was here for the Q and A, it's exactly what he recommended.
Right.
It was like a little, you know, defined dollar amount for that day-to-day need, so absolutely agree.
So, for private development projects, it's just simply hourly, straight hourly, and whatever classification they deem appropriate?
I think, again, I think it would be up to us to make that determination.
Agreed.
And agree with them before we set them loose.
Agreed.
And I think that's what's important about the purchase order program and so on and so forth. And then the other issue would be to have John have the luxury of having that discussion without a fee-based discussion and.
Precisely.
But, again, as Councilman Cox pointed out, sooner rather than later on the RFP.
100%, I would say we target next council meeting. Any further discussion, counsel? Okay, Clerk Demas, we'll have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes. Motion carried. I will work with the attorney, council members that I mentioned, I would like to pull you in of kickoff meeting, if you're open to be a part of that, just so we set right expectations for this interim capacity. Next topic on my list is our Double Hall Solutions Partnership. Nate, thank you again for being here for the session at our special meeting. Counsel, just one pointed thing that I had in my packet, and Finance Director McEwen, thank you so much for providing a hard copy. We need to land a salary range for this city administrator role. So, I'll call your attention to a couple of things. If you look at your packet that was provided, you'll have a lot of market data. You'll have market data from quote-unquote "lower population" communities, higher population communities, with some salary range considerations in the bottom table. When I say that, I'm referring to page two of the packet. So, that's one data point I want you to consider. For context, lower population average low-range salary is $101,250, with an average higher-range salary of $170,916.67. The second thing I want you all to consider is, Finance Director McEwen, and please, feel free to speak independently here, had done an analysis on just our budgetary considerations and financial capacity, with obviously different variables, such as our creation of this new part-time role with John, and the relationship that had to the previous responsibilities of the city administrator, which we talked about earlier, i.e. reduce the city administrator's plate operationally. But John comes with a cost, because we want to make sure John is compensated for all the great work he's doing. But we got to consider things like that, we got to consider all the other budgetary considerations we have in place, and then we consider the last hire we made as an example, or the previous positions that we had filled in this role and their wages. So, Amy, do you want to comment anything there?
I think you pretty much summed it up. Like, I was going over the general fund, taking into account everything that is an expense that's going to carry over, so stuff that we can't really eliminate because it's going to carry over year over year.
Love it. So, obviously, a range is intended to be arranged for a reason, because it provides counsel and decision-makers the flexibility based on experience and expertise and all the other factors of choosing a salary that is appropriate for a given individual they're pursuing for hire. But Nate asked us to choose a range, so to punch straight to the headline takeaway, Finance Director McEwen and I met, talked about this data, want to come to counsel with a recommendation. Our recommendation for the range is $85,000 to $114,000. The why behind it is because our lowest salary offer to somebody in this position was 85. So, that's a helpful perspective on the lower end. This administration granted 85 to a previous individual. On the higher end, why 114? Well, 114, we felt like tracks nicely with the average high-range salary of lower populations in the market data. Now, there's no apples-apples comparison here, we're not another community listed here, but we feel like the 114 benchmarks us nicely with the average high-range salary of our lower-population peer communities. Second thing is, is that we just made a significant investment in John, and Amy, our Finance Director, obviously, will unlock those funds for us. And so, John's duties were previously the city administrator's duties. So, the city administrator job by definition has now been less based on the move that John has made, but it costs us money to unlock John. So, for all those reasons, we're proposing an 85 to 114 range for the position. Obviously, this is up to the policymakers to set that, so I wanted to make sure we had a discussion around it. Nate, I don't know if you need a formal motion in regards to your output, but I think the ask is to have some formality to this, so I'd like to make a motion whenever counsel's ready to entertain a range for this position.
Mayor, may I say something?
Yeah, please.
On the last page?
Yeah.
I think Double Hall was making a recommendation of 110 to 130, just to point that out to counsel, along with the other comprehensive benefit packages.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So, counsel, I guess your options now are a motion to support the 85 to 114, maybe a motion to support another range that you feel is more appropriate. Obviously, a motion and a second would unlock some further discussion here, unless there's any comments off of that.
I'll make a motion to accept the range as proposed.
Motion to?
Can you be more specific?
85,000.
85 to 114?
Motion by Cox for the range, 85 to 114. We have a second by McNabb. Counsel, any discussion on the motioned and supported range?
My discussion would be centered around benefits associated with auto allowance and relocation assistance in some fashion. Those seem to be a couple of things that might help, might help sweeten the pot a little bit if the annual salary is not to the, not to the higher end of the recommendation from Double Hall. So, Double Hall's been 110 to 130, us 85 to 114, which seems very reasonable from your explanation of it, Amy's purview of it. I think that is fair and reasonable. Gibraltar is an attractive place to want to be. I really like what Double Hall put together for the city of Slayne in terms of what opportunities there are for the next person to come here, and there are a lot of really great opportunities. We're in, you know, good financial condition, we have a lot of stuff really going for us in this community that would really attract the good candidates, so I think that finance is super important, but there are, this is definitely a good area to live in and work in, and I think that it goes a long way. But do we, do we need to discuss auto allowance or relocation assistance, whether that be financial or even just clerical and administrative assistance? Do we need to do that now as part of this package, or can that be?
Nate, do you want to approach and just maybe give us some perspective here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and counsel. All your benefits are going to be negotiated as part of a contract agreement with a new candidate. I think what would be important to note, in case I'm asked, is if there's any benefits that are not included. But to Councilmember Mulner's question about relocation, the way we've handled it in other communities is that we say it may be a consideration. If counsel's comfortable with that, that's all I need to know today, but if it's off the table, then that is something I would need to know.
I think those are, my opinion, and Finance Director McEwen, please chime in here, I think those are case-by-case negotiable circumstances. I don't think we set a memorialized standard for.
Sure.
So, Nate, my guidance would be, we can evaluate a case-by-case scenario.
Comfortable with me saying it may be a consideration for relocation.
And the devil's in the details, and it's a candidate-specific question, in my opinion, relative to pool, so I would say let's focus on the major range as a primary, and then we can work together as administration to solve those issues if we need to.
Yeah, I'm on board.
All right, any further discussion on this matter? Clerk Demas, we'll have you call roll whenever you are ready.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes. Motion carried. Nate, you got your range. The next one is, I'm going to flag you back to our last discussion as counsel. Just wanted to give you an update that I had sent the termination notice to Allied related to our HVAC maintenance, which means they have been notified via certified mail based on your authorization last meeting. There was a bid sheet that was previously shared with you on who bid on the last opening, and John, I know, was reaching out to another vendor. I don't think this summit needs hard action today, but we need to land this plane as soon as possible, so I want to see if there's any guidance, questions, comments. I'm flagging to you that HVAC maintenance contract needs to be fulfilled, my suggestion will be as late as next meeting. John, feel free to chime in, anything on the expert side, I know you mentioned, and counsel, you saw the bid sheet last time.
I haven't heard back from expert.
Okay.
I'll give them another call tomorrow.
And counsel, your last discussion, you gave good guidance on firms we should consider beyond the bid sheet, so I just want to make sure we're landing that by next meeting. Second item is a very unique one. City Attorney, please help me out here. I put this in your packet. I'm going to do my best to explain this, because it's not an area I'm familiar with. Our assessor flagged, to our attorney and myself, that there are a situation where there's two parcels at a property on Adams, this is all detailed in your packet, it provided the background emails. The first one that you see listed there numerically is the one that's in question, and there's deeds, three of them specifically, showing a transfer to Belmont Properties in 2010, and to an individual, a resident here in our community, in 2020, with some subsequent adjustments to the individual familial connections. The short story here is that the county never processed the transfer. So, one of these parcels, which somebody's assuming is their property, the county never transferred this, and it went up for auction. By definition, when things aren't secured in auction, the city then inherits that. So, we are now the owners of a parcel that a private resident was under the impression they owned, and the disconnect here seems to be a lack of transfer from a county perspective. Did I summarize that effectively?
As effective as you can, it's a confusing situation, yeah.
So, we talked to our assessor, we talked to our city attorney, I put the paperwork in here, we explored all the obvious things, right? Like, what about taxes and other considerations, right? Keep in mind, we own it now. We looked at all the paperwork to validate that this was, in fact, just a transfer of paperwork error on the county side. We looked at all this. I didn't want to have this be an assessor situation, closed door, this is involving a city parcel that's now by definition owned by the city, but a resident who was under the impression they owned it, found out this flag. To me, it's a paperwork transfer error, and I think the right thing to do is return this parcel on paper to this resident who owns said parcel. So, I just want to formalize that via motion, I don't want to act in isolation here, our assessor brought all this information, all of it in your packet. City Attorney, anything else you'd like to add?
Yeah, this will also allow the.
Yeah, this will also allow the assessor to put it on the tax roll so that the individual can be taxed going forward, because right now, the property is in the city's possession.
So, we're not getting any tax...
Until it's in the individual's name and the individual's willing to accept the deed, so it's in their name and they'll pay taxes on it.
So, I know it's a weird circumstance, but I want to bring it to you, given the weirdness of it. My ask is for you to motion to support the transfer of this parcel as described in your packet to this individual, which would obviously then allow the assessor to allow us to capture the taxation of that property.
Was it just bare land? No building structure?
I don't... I don't know, to be honest. I don't know what's situated on the property.
I think it's bare land, is my understanding. Oh, that should be in the packet, sorry.
It looks like this is on the corner of Adams and Neely, and it looks like maybe a vacant lot next to...
Yeah, there's like two parcels there, exactly.
The quickclaim deed in the packet says vacant lot.
Okay, so that must be the one just south of... so actually at the intersection.
So, I know it's a unique one, but, I mean, my perspective is let's get the parcel back to the resident, and let's get taxation as any other resident would pay on their property after the paperwork is fixed.
Wayne County had an error in their original legal description, and they didn't have this lot in the legal, and that's why we sat on... we didn't sit on it. It got transferred back to us through the land bank, and no one knew any different at that point.
Are there... is there a taxable value that would have went out to somebody over the period of however many years this has been going? So, if it's been... I'm assuming it's five years, but it was at the transfer in 2020 is when the error in the county occurred, and so they stopped receiving a tax bill for that parcel?
Yeah, that parcel went into tax auction in 2015. So, that's... but then this... I think the 2020 process is, from what I understand, is when things started getting triggering, as far as there was some level of error disconnect there.
Do we have the background? Last time, we received tax revenue on that property?
I don't think we got that from the assessor. We're not getting any.
I guess you could say it's weird.
It's weird, right? And that's why I want to bring it to you. Look, and Anthony's been exhaustive on this. We've talked to every party involved. We've tried to find it. To me, this is... the most straightforward resolution is to fix the paperwork error, which is clearly documented in inventory.
So, you're looking for a motion for correction?
A motion to...
It'd actually be a motion to sell or transfer the property. We're not selling, we're transferring it to the individual. And for this type of situation, we need five affirmative votes to actually transfer it, because we're transferring property.
So, is this the individual that didn't pay the taxes?
They didn't own the property this entire time.
Yeah. They weren't... from what I understand, the paperwork show we're able to pull here, right, which is somewhat documented, is they weren't aware that there was a disconnect and that the county never transferred the paperwork. So, they're paying presumably on their parcel they have on their home, that the parcel that was not transferred appropriately went to tax auction, and they lost. But that's why we own it now.
Would it be appropriate for us to charge them the amount of what the tax would have been for the last five years?
It's a good question. I have full transparency. I asked that question.
Yeah. The issue is, they didn't own it, so we'd be taxing them for our property this entire time. That's the issue.
Who owned it?
Did they not presume they owned it?
I don't know what they presumed.
They...
That's a valid statement. I would just think that they thought the property was theirs.
Yeah, and they're already paying on the property they have their... so there's... that's why this thing is really messy and gray. I think the short answer is, I asked that question. I think the assessor advised that you could go back potentially a year or two.
That's usually though, when there's an error where the assessor doesn't tax for someone's property. This is a goofy situation where we actually own the property, so we can't tax for property we own.
Wow. Yeah, so very interesting, obviously, which is why I'm trying to bring this to you. I didn't want to make this a decision.
Yeah, I'm trying to think through it quickly, and it would be... I mean, when they bought it, they thought they bought both, I imagine, or...
The paperwork says they did, right? But in theory, right? The county transferred one parcel, not the other. So, this other one went into auction, then we own it, and here we are 10 years later.
But it wasn't actually purchased? It was just... it was just transferred to...
Yeah, the disconnect fell when the county transfer did not take place for that. The language... Anthony, help me out legally here.
There was an error in the original deed that Wayne County issued way back when. And so, the easy situation would be you could do a correction of deed with Wayne County, but it's so long ago, and to Wayne County to do that, it would... I don't even know if it's possible at this point. And so, that's when we got to this point, the assessor brought it to our attention, that we need to transfer it back to that person so we can add to the tax roll. And that's what this quickclaim deed is accomplishing, so we can get it back on the tax roll for this.
So, according to Amy, the last tax collection was made in 2015.
There you go. Thank you. Which is when the tax auction took place, thus, city started owning it, so that tracks.
So, who's stupid here? Is that the assessor?
I don't know. I mean, that's a tough...
I know that's a crude remark, but...
Let's just be blunt here, right? The current assessor is the one that flagged this to us, presumably, right? So, that would be a good thing, right? The disconnect fell in 2015, right? Which was when the county didn't transfer this, and the auction then led this to be in our hands. That's when... that's the timeline at a high level.
And we inherit it just by default?
We could... if it doesn't... if nobody buys in that auction, then the city owns it.
Yeah, it went to the land bank, and then from the land bank, it goes to us if no one buys it at auction.
So, you need more time on this? I don't want to go in circles, so I would say just be direct here. So, if you need... if there's not a level of confidence, to me, this has been exhaustively put forth in your packet with a description of what happened, why it happened, who it happened with. If you need more time on it, you don't feel comfortable with it, then we can postpone the next meeting. This resident has been waiting to obviously get resolution. I'm bringing it to you, because I didn't want to make sure this was an assessor in isolation situation.
Is there more than just the item B and then the quickclaim deed?
Uh, there should have been an email perhaps with a little bit of background on the assessor, but I tried to summarize the material elements of that in your paragraph.
The assessor knows the ins and outs of this, so maybe it's best if the assessor comes and talks to you guys to explain what happened and the history of all of it. So, that'd be my suggestion to...
Okay, so let's do that. So, I don't want to go in circles here. Let's get that for the next meeting. I would just express that we have to make a decision by next meeting out of respect for the timeline that this has continued to prevail.
Well, can he come to the meeting and explain it to council?
I'll ask the assessor.
Yeah.
All right. Next topic is going to be a discussion. I want council support here. So, council, you received something via email as a follow-up to our prior discussions. We had, simply put, the actuarial evaluation. So, the pension, where we did the actuarial evaluation, led to a set of agreed-upon verbal terms within the union discussions and discussions with our administration. Our city attorney has worked with the pension attorney. Council, I sent you the draft proposal, and then I sent you really three requested revisions that are fully aligned with the union. I would love to get this agreement authorized, but I obviously want council support. I think council's already supported the material elements of it. Again, this is all sent to you on the percentages and the structural conditions of the pension amendment. Attorney obviously is locking down the specifics with our pension attorney, which were a couple minor updates that were sent to you via email. I'd love some directional approval or authorization from council on this amendment so that we can execute it with our attorney and the pension lawyer and the union members. I just want to see if there's any questions, and if not, attorney, I don't know what you'd specifically recommend from a procedural perspective, but I think the material's already been reviewed with council. They supported the percentiles and the breakdown, the agreement, just to me, as a couple minor texting tweaks that need to be made, which has already been shared with council.
Right, yeah. So, if council wants to approve subject to those changes being made, then that would give authorization to have it executed once it's done. The pension attorney is presently making the changes that we requested, and we should have those hopefully, I would think, any day now. I spoke to him this weekend, so...
Yeah, so you already stamped on the terms, council, of the agreed-upon verbal agreement. The updates are tweaking 2.75% to be 2.7%, so like literally addressing that percentile in the document, which is an error by the pension attorney collaboration and translation. The second thing was to make the contract language directly reflective of our union contract language. So, there's one sentence in there that needed to be updated. So, again, not material changes to the substance of the agreement, but I want to get the union agreement authorized. So, your motion to authorize the pension amendment would allow me to then execute that with the union members.
Make the motion to execute the third amendment to the City of Gibraltar Public Safety Officer's Retirement System with the modifications of the 2.7% and the clarity on the union language to match the original agreement.
Thank you, Councilmember Mulner. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by McNabb. Council, any further discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomask will have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Council, next topic, just more of an FYI, and big thanks to our city attorney. The cell tower that I flagged to you, I included some of the documents. Crown Castle has proposed two options, a lease or a purchase. I think the consensus we had as a council was we have some details we need to work out offline with Anthony and other parties, but the lease seemed to be the more preferred option from the directional signal that we all discussed. I just want to give you a flag that Anthony's working on some paperwork on the backend. Councilmember Mulner and I, obviously, have had some discussions offline with the parties involved. I hope to bring this to you at latest by next meeting with at least a more material update, and we'll work with Anthony when we're ready to do that. Next topic was just a time card policy. Working on a time card policy with department heads internally. Expect that on your next agenda. Last topic for me before I get to strategic priority updates is going to be, we'll need to appoint a planning and DDA commission member. Full transparency, I had an individual I want to bring to you today, but Katie educated me that that individual can't serve on two boards that are relevant, so that individual is out of the loop for consideration. So, council, I'm just asking you to consider by next meeting appointing a planning and DDA commission member to fill Mr. Wood's seat, and I'm excited about that.
We have two who we have to fill for the board review.
Yeah, and board review. Councilmember Mulner flagged, yeah, absolutely. And then, council, the last thing, just kind of going to see on my updates, was administrative updates. I put in, updated a strategic priority list for you all with actions in bold. Tremendous thanks to department heads, council, and John for all the hard work in advancing our projects. Any questions on my agenda topics? All right, turn over to council reports. Councilman Valentine is not here with us this evening, so I'd love to turn over to Councilwoman Wood.
Okay. Beautification, very simple. It's very hot, it's very dry, and we're trying to do the best to make our flowers at least perk up.
Thank you.
You know, rain dances, whatever helps, but, you know, we're trying to do something. That's pretty much it for beautification, because there really isn't much we can be doing right now. And I do want to thank the DPW and the court workers, the court system for having the court workers, because we did get the city hall cleaned up. It was looking pretty bad, pretty weedy, and we did get that cleaned up, even though it was 110 degrees in the shade.
Toasty.
But thank you to all of those people. The Gibraltar Historical Museum is open September 7th from 2:00 to 4:00. And that's it.
Thank you for all the work on the commission side and for the historical museum update. Appreciate it. Any questions for Councilwoman Wood? Councilman Cox?
No report.
Any questions for Councilman Cox? Councilman McNabb?
My only report right now for the waterways is we're waiting on the council, Wayne County Council, Anthony, and the mayor to draft the final paperwork, send it to them, and get started on ordering weed harvester.
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out to Councilman McNabb.
Hopefully by next, we have to have this done by September.
Yeah, huge shout out to Councilman McNabb. Council, based on his efforts and the Waterways Commission efforts and all the parties that have been pushing, looks like the City of Gibraltar will be receiving a grant from Wayne County in the amount of the weed harvester, which would then allow us to centralize our ownership of it versus the previous model of the county owning it. And obviously, we're working on all the details of that, but great news for City of Gibraltar and big shout to Councilman McNabb. Thank you for all the work to make that happen.
Thank you.
Any questions for Councilman McNabb? Councilman Mulner?
No report, Your Honor.
Any questions for Councilman Mulner? Councilman Walden?
No report tonight.
Any questions for Councilman Walden? All right. Parks and Recreation Director cannot be here with us this evening and did not have anything specific to share, so, council, any questions for Parks and Rec Director? All right. City Attorney, anything on your end?
No report.
Any questions for City Attorney? John, our DPW lead, if floor is yours, and you got a healthy agenda tonight.
Yeah, I do. First one is billing for... or application number two for absolute quality for lead line replacement, fifty-three thousand seven ninety-three, and pay application three, five thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars for additional work due to mislocation of waterline markings. Both pay apps have been sent over to Rains for review, so I haven't heard back from them Attached is an invoice from Downriver Bus Repair for the repair of pump number one.
I'm sorry, do you need a motion for the pay app, one, two, and three?
Oh, pay app.
Do we need to wait for the review that you just highlighted?
Well, it's not going to be any more than this.
I might suggest we put it on the next agenda if there's a review pending. Unless, you know, because either way, we'd want the outcome of that, right? So, I don't think you need action tonight, John. My recommendation, unless you feel otherwise, I would suggest we complete the review, make sure all work is completed, and then you can bring it next meeting. At least all the work's done now. We're just waiting on the party to review.
And if we've already approved the bids, wouldn't it be something that would be handled administratively internally, and then we put on the consent agenda?
Good call, too. So, let's work on all those items, and Finance Director McKeon can pull you in. Thank you. So, back to item B.
Okay, item B is an invoice from Downriver Bus Repair to repair one of our pumps. The original estimate was five thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents, and that was approved by council April 28th. I got the new invoice, and there was a seven hundred and forty-three dollar and eleven cent increase. This was for additional work and parts required after the first repair was completed. They were unknown at the time of the estimate. So, I'm asking for approval of the new invoice, six thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah, so council, I'd recommend the motion to be reflecting the final invoice of sixty-six forty-two fifty for the background provided by John.
Make the motion to approve the payment for sixty-six forty-two fifty, payment to Downriver Bus.
Motion by Mulner, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by McNabb. Any discussion on this matter? Clerk Tomask, please call roll.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Motion carried. John, back to you.
We have since set a policy with Downriver Bus that appeals required for repair services based on their estimate and authorization and additional PO for additional work if needed. Just don't carry on. So they've been getting POs here for their work.
That's great.
The next one is DPW is requesting to purchase more limestone to replenish our stockpiles as we used everything up when we repaired the sanitary sewer over the community center. I received pricing from Freeport Aggregate for 6A limestone and 23A limestone. So 50 tons of each is $2,375. Asking for support, purchase it.
So counsel, John's looking for a motion to purchase the limestone for a total cost of $23.75.
I'll make a motion to purchase 50 tons of 23A and 50 tons of 6A for a total cost of $2,375.
Motion by Cox, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Walden, any discussion?
Were the Miles and the other guys unresponsive to?
No, they were higher.
Oh, they were, so you did receive?
So I did go out. Miles said use his last price, okay? So I reached out to Freeport to see if he had a better price.
And his was better.
And he did.
Roger that.
John, thank you for your diligence.
We have an account with him now. We updated it, so we have two sources for material.
Any further discussion on this matter? Clerk Damas, please call roll.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Motion carried. John, back to you.
Okay. I have a quote in here from West Metro Door Company for the overhead door on the EPW building. Exterior door there for $2,100 to install a electric door operator to the one exterior overhead door. Currently, this is a manual chain operated. We have to padlock it at night. It'd make it easier for the guys during the winter when they have to jump in and out of the equipment to open up the door. It's that one door there. I had them come out to service it, and there's some work to be done on it. Done some of it.
The roll-up door to the most west?
Yep.
Counsel, I'll be looking for your motion to purchase for $2,100 the electric door operation to one exterior overhead.
Would it eliminate the chain altogether and go to cable?
The chain would be, we could still open it by chain if it was an emergency. Chain will get up in the can and you pull the cable down.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can bypass it.
Yeah.
By pulling the chain and electric.
You have one like that on the other side of the building.
This won't be operated on the exterior, right, by remote or anything, everything from the inside?
Yeah, we'd have the remote inside.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by McNabb, can you just make sure we're specific for clerk? Motion for $2,100 purchase for electric door?
There's a motion?
Yeah, Councilman McNabb, you support that motion?
Pardon?
You support the motion as listed?
Yes, I did, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Wood. Counsel, any discussion on this matter? Clerk Damas will have you call roll.
Schumate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Motion carried. John, back to you.
Okay, I have a quote here from Kennedy Industries. This is for a new replacement pump for the Bayview Lift Station for $22,019. Lift station has two flight pumps in it, but we're down to one pump. Pump cannot be repaired. It's going to cost more to repair it than buying a new pump. We did look at other options, but were unable to find another pump that would work as designed. So asking for approval to purchase one new flight pump for $22,019 from Kennedy Industries. Need time on this pump is 14 to 16 weeks after ordering.
Counsel, looking for a motion to authorize the $22,019 purchase from Kennedy Industries for the flight pump.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mulner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Walden. John, just a couple thoughts. I think, one, thank you for the identification of a lot of these areas. I think for the broader context, maybe can you just provide a little commentary on the importance of this pump relative to the one that's down?
Yeah, we only have one pump there, and it takes care of Bayview. Our only other option would be to throw a big pump in there and run it across the street.
Yeah, I think that, and that's why I wanted everybody to have the context. I think the teams have done a great job on flood control and management with the...
And we've been lucky so far.
With the monitoring, with the, you know, dispatch integration, hats off to DPW. I mean, it's amazing to not see basements impacted, and so we need to keep our infrastructure strong here. So John, thanks for bringing it. Any other comments, questions? Clerk Damas will have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes. Motion carried. John, back to you.
Okay, in the best interest, interest of the city, I recommend that we use GV Cement Contracting for sidewalk and concrete road repairs from water main repairs and where we got some bad pavement. Rockwood did go out and bid roadway and sidewalk replacements. GV was their low bidder, attached our to-bid results from Rockwood. GV has worked for the city before and will honor their pricing for Rockwood to the city. I just got his letter this afternoon. I've also attached a list of the projects for concrete repair. So I'm asking for a motion to use GV Cement for concrete repairs this year.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Cox?
Second.
Let's be specific, though, so the, just sorry, just make sure the language is good for Clerk Damas. What, John, can you give us more specific on what you want that motion to be?
I can, I might be able to frame it the right way.
Thank you.
Okay.
And let's emphasize the...
Make the motion to contract with GV Cement at the prices that were furnished to Rockwood for the concrete repairs and sidewalk repairs that are designated by the DPW.
And time sensitive in the best interest of the City of Gibraltar.
Sure.
I think that's important elements. We have projects that have been sitting there neglected for way too long, and I just want to emphasize that this needs to be addressed immediately, and...
I'm a big proactive person about bidding stuff, but this has sat long enough and it needs to be addressed.
It's sat way too long, and it's a risk, in my opinion, like literally safety-wise. So I think that for all those reasons, Councilman Cox, Katie, I know that was a long one, so I want to make sure our clerk's got the language.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion from Cox. Do we have a second for that motion?
Second.
Second by Mulner.
I already had McNabb as a...
Oh, you did, sorry. Okay, I want to make sure.
So I, I mean, they did have three quotes. I know of two of the companies here, they do quite a bit of this type of work.
Yep.
And they, they're very much accustomed to the program. Their unit prices are in line with one another, they're not crazy, crazy far off. This bid took place not even a week ago, no, about a week, eight days ago, so it's not, not old. And I think this is a competitive way to go about doing it without wasting time and additional resources. I'm supportive.
Yes.
Well said, Rob. Any further discussion on this matter?
My only other discussion would be to see if there's pavement solutions, asphalt pavement solutions, either on different topic, line item for tonight, or if that's inclusive of...
These are concrete asphalt, going around with L's. He's got a list. You're supposed to give me today, you're supposed to have a price.
Got it.
So I got to call him.
Got it, okay.
So he has some of the work that was on here for the water main breaks, and gave him a pretty good list of repairs to go out and...
Can we expect that next meeting?
Yes.
And so then the areas that we see spray paint in the roads around, around the area that you have filled in here, those are areas that...
Rash fault repairs and concrete repairs.
Got it, okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Awesome. Any further discussion on this matter? Clerk Damas, again, that was a lengthy one. Any, you got what you need?
Yes.
Can we call roll, please?
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes. Motion carried. John, back to you.
Attached is a quote from Expert Mechanical with two options for a domestic hot water system for the city hall complex. Also is a quote from Expert Mechanical to replace the existing venting on the two existing domestic hot water boilers for $5,850. Existing flues are marginal and are constructed out of galvanized double-wall B-vent material. New ductwork would be stainless steel. Both boilers are working as they should right now, as the bad gas valve was repaired on boiler two. Safety inspections have been done. And I've got his reports in here of both boilers. DPW is requesting that the existing venting be replaced by expert for $5,850. Looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Clerk Damas, do you have that language, okay? All right, we got a second by McNabb. Any discussion on this matter?
Yeah, I piped down there. That galvanized pipe's in bad shape.
You leaned in on this one, thank you.
Bad shape. I've been there and witnessed it, so it went in the right direction there.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Clerk Damas, please call roll whenever you're ready.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Motion carried. John, back to you.
All right, the last one is the revised price I had. Water Department's requesting $3,350 for the testing of six of the larger water meters on the water system. These are at Parsons, Schumate, Carlson, High Cal Steel, and the Metallands. School meters are tested every year before school starts. The High Cal meter is close to turning over to 1 million gallons, and we got to have the head changed on that. Plus, it'll screw up the billing system, because when it reads it, it goes back to zero. So the computer probably can't pick up the difference. So attached is a quote for meter testing, and if parts are required. So that's $2,025 for testing. If parts and retest are required, it's another $1,325, but that would go meter by meter. So total's $3,350, worst-case scenario. And I've attached recommendations from the AWWA on large water meters and how often they should be tested. So I'm looking for a motion for having these meters checked.
Just one thing, that bigger picture, I think it's important for counsel. We talked of scheduling a meeting with Binesh to evolve our partnership to take a look at the meter systems we have in place for managing inventory of meters, when they should be triggered for replacement, how you replace them. That, to me, is a really important bigger-picture element of this. Like, we can't just keep playing whack-a-mole with meters. Let's get a system in place to manage this. Some of you will be included in that meeting with Binesh to talk about that, and then counsel, you'll have a phase authorization. Obviously, we're excited about our water loss drop from 30-plus percent to 13 percent, huge win. Now let's get to the meters. But John emphasized that these were a little more time-sensitive ones with unique cases, like rollover others that we should authorize now before we get to that bigger picture. So that was my push, at least for your background. So counsel, is there a motion to authorize up to $25.50?
Up to $3,350, it's the new...
Yep, up to, sorry, with the revised quote, yep, up to $3,350, up to key to address the listed meters in your packet?
So moved.
Motion by Mulner. Clerk Damas, I want to make sure you got that language, okay? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Walden. Counsel, discussion on this matter?
It says parts if needed. These guys already got a number on the parts if needed.
Yeah, John, can you explain the background?
Probably the normal parts that were out in them.
Yeah, okay.
Rebuild kits.
When was the last time this was done? This is, is this a yearly operation?
Yearly operation. Bill says he usually does the schools every year.
Okay.
All right. We got, last year, I think he did a senior house on Gibraltar Road, because they got two big meters. He wants to get the metal lens checked and steel milled, because it's, that meter's getting ready to roll over.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on this matter? Clerk Damas, we'll have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion carried. John, anything else on your end?
I think, uh, we, one more?
We got your surplus equipment.
All right. DPW is requesting two pieces of equipment be made surplus so they can be sold by silent auction. The two pieces are John Deere HPX Zero Turn Gator, or no, that's the Gator. That's the old Gator that we're wanting to get rid of. Engine seized up, comes with an extra set of tires and rims. And the other piece of equipment is a John Deere Zero Track Pro 2008. Needs a battery. We don't even use it.
So counsel, you'll be looking for a motion to authorize the surplus, which would thus result in a sell by...
Motion to authorize a surplus auction.
Second.
Second by Mulner. Counsel, any discussion on this matter?
Yeah, what is a silent auction? How does that happen here?
Nobody knows any of that. Can't tell you.
The rule of silent auctions, you don't talk about silent auctions.
Start minimum bid.
I mean, yeah, I get the auction, the silent part I don't get.
I think you're, you're probably heard, like, normal fundraisers, right, where you sign a piece of paper with the bidding process. John, maybe you can educate on that.
Is it advertised so that we can get some public involvement?
Put it on Facebook.
Could we put it on our Facebook page or our website, you know?
Wouldn't it go on to BidNet? Is that the normal protocol for it?
That's the normal, that's what I'm asking.
What we're doing?
Is it, that's not what we're doing. It's a silent auction.
Oh, okay.
It's like an in-house...
We can go on BidNet.
I just, I...
You know? Take a picture of each one and send it to them and add this condition.
My ask is, John, why don't you make sure you just get city attorney endorsement on how we're doing it. That would be my ask, to make sure that we're safe. If you want to go silent auction, you want to go BidNet, you want to go both, we'll just make sure the city attorney's on board with it.
My recommendation is we follow your protocol on that, so if BidNet is what we do in the past, just throw it on BidNet.
All right.
I appreciate the silent auction, but...
Get ready for BidNet.
John's bringing new ways of operation, but I'd say BidNet might be the safest place for us at this point.
Send a picture of each.
Great. Any further discussion on this matter? Clerk Damas will have you call roll whenever you're ready.
McNabb?
Yes.
Mulner?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Motion carried. John, anything else on your end?
That's it for this week.
We sound like broken records, but tremendous thanks for all of the work you are doing. The agendas are healthy. Every week, you're addressing a ton of things that are needed to be addressed, and just really appreciate you having me in the office.
Okay, for, they started work today on the middle Gibraltar Road walking bridges.
Exciting.
We started the north one first, and I think you finished all the big repairs on that one. So you'll be moving across the street starting Wednesday. And we got bids for city hall roof. We had seven bidders. And I'll be bringing the recommendation to the infrastructure committee.
Thank you so much.
A little bid.
Really appreciate it. Councilman McNabb, I know you've done a lot of work on that amongst Clerk Damas and others, so thank you a lot. Any questions for John? Clerk Damas, floor is yours.
All right, thank you. I'd like to request counsel's approval to add electronic recycling to our annual shred day. That's traditionally held on the third Saturday in October from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. in the city hall parking lot. This year's event is scheduled to take place on Saturday, October 18th. Shred day is usually a successful annual service we offer to our residents, providing secure and convenient option for paper document shredding. We've historically partnered with Electrocycle, who's provided excellent service over the years, and their total cost for two hours of paper shredding is $650. This year, I'd like to propose expanding shred day to include electronic recycling for both our residents and internal municipal use. The municipal building, including city hall and the public safety department, we currently have a large volume of outdated electronics, old computers, phones, et cetera, that are no longer in use. These items would be properly wiped with the help of our IT and prepared for recycling. Providing an electronic recycling option for our residents would be beneficial extension of the community event. I've received three quotes, three vendors. I provided their feedback, their pricing in your packet, and I recommend continuing our partnership with Electrocycle for both paper shredding and electronics recycling services at a total cost of $1,300 for two hours. They offer a competitive rate and a proven track record with our event.
Counsel, motion would be in your court to authorize $1,300 for the electronic recycling.
Make the motion.
Motion by Wood, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Second by McNabb, discussion?
Katie, are these like computer towers and that that we've had? Are any of them associated early past here with anything that might be related to our ongoing investigations and audits and that, that we might be shredding or dumping electronic activities before these investigations are completed?
That I don't, I don't know.
I know that part of it, it's a great flag. I think a part of it was...
We have a graveyard of computer towers, so it's hard to say which one came from where.
If I heard correctly, the ETS, our IT partner, was going to be making sure that we had backup documents, like all of it would be copied and stored.
Save what needs to be saved. Yeah, we would use them to, to go through and wipe it and save what needs to be saved and.
City attorney, any perspective?
Yeah, I would just highly, highly recommend and advise we don't destroy any computer that may be associated with any ongoing things we have.
Right.
Great flag.
Thank you.
Let's make sure we cover that base. City attorney, we'll consult you on that as we approach that date. Any other discussion? Clerk Tomasic, we'll have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Molnar?
Yes.
Shoemate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Motion carried. Clerk Tomasic, anything on your end?
No, that's all.
Any questions for Clerk Tomasic? Treasurer Fonti?
Yeah, just briefly, to update council, as you know, we've implemented the purchase order program. However, when we implemented it, we didn't have any standard terms and conditions on the, the PO, so it was basically a approval, internal approval process. But it allowed us to test the system through the corridors here. And Amy, I'd like to shout out to her, thank you for persevering through this. But lately, with the advent of John on board with DPW and the acceleration of some of these minor contracts that don't ascend into a completed, call it a standardized contract where we can use purchase orders, we didn't have the standard terms associated with that. So another shout out to Attorney Bologna for helping us create the standard terms. And so that council and everyone knows, department heads, that the standard terms are standard terms, and more specifically, if we have more specific terms that we need to put in, liquidated damage clauses or anything that are associated with these smaller contracts with vendors and smaller contracts and maintenance contracts for an annual, an annual event for, let's say, tree trimming and stump removal. We can use these purchase orders for that with the standard terms, and then whatever we need specifically, we can add them to it. I've encouraged Amy, as we call this our beta testing program, John's going to be bringing a lot of things in, as other department heads will. We'll test it out. If there's any questions, we could rely on Tony's advice to see us through that, and I think it'll work well. I think it'll be a good platform for us to now have not only approvals, but terms and conditions where we could have a bite with our vendors in case we have to go back for whatever purpose.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Next up, we have Finance Director McEwen.
No report.
Any questions for Finance Director McEwen? All right. Police Chief, Director of Public Safety, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Since the last council meeting, the police department responded to one hundred and forty-six calls for service. We had nine incident reports, three arrests, fifteen traffic citations, and four detective bureau investigations. For Gibraltar Police Department news, all of you are aware, we experienced severe weather on seven-twenty-eight. As a result of the storm, several city systems were affected. I'm in the process of fixing some of the equipment in the building, including phones, internet, and switches in the server room. Officer David Jones passed his written and practical EMT exam hosted by the city. He's in the process of scheduling, or he did process for his national registry exam on August eighteenth. All students who attended the EMT class hosted by the City of Gibraltar have passed both the written and practical examination.
Awesome.
Actron Systems ordered the building cameras and the NVRs for the municipal building and the community center. They're going to begin installation in the next few weeks. Windout alarm was also on site on July thirtieth. There are several systems within the municipal building and the community center that are not functioning. I'm in the process of working on quotes to get this repaired. I have two as of right now, and I'm waiting on a third from Johnson Controls. And the fire department is live with the pay scheduling software, and it seems to be going well.
Got it.
So included in your packet is the three-week study conducted on Bayview Drive and Stoflet from the, or the All Traffic Solutions Report. In conclusion of the study, no further action will be taken, except for traffic enforcement as needed. We did pull a ticket with DPW. They are going to be installing poles on the south end of Bayview, and we'll be conducting another four-week study.
Awesome, thank you.
Also included in your packets is the records clerk report, the ordinance officer's report. I do have one city communication. On August the first, patrol vehicle fifteen-five, which is a two thousand eighteen Chevy Tahoe, was taken to Guardian Car Care in Trenton, recharged the air conditioning, and a large clunk could be heard in the front end. They contacted me back and advised that the vehicle needed several repairs down to the front end, including front struts, sway bar bushings, needed front and rear shocks. The cost for the repair was estimated at twenty-nine hundred dollars. Fifteen-five is the fifth oldest vehicle in our fleet. I authorized the repair, and I received a call that it was finished today, and it was twenty-nine hundred dollars and some change. So I just wanted to file that with the city, because it goes over the city's purchase policy. I do have three action items. Action item A, seven dispatchers are certified emergency medical dispatchers through ABCO. Emergency medical dispatchers are equipped with the knowledge and skills to effectively handle emergency medical calls, prioritize responses, and provide pre-arrival instructions on improving public safety and outcomes. Dispatcher Hillary Moore is new and has not taken the class yet. Lieutenant Trush and Sergeant Brandon Seifert are also interested in attending the class and will be utilized as backup dispatchers. Sergeant Brandon Seifert is also interested in becoming the EMD manager, and he will oversee the program. I, and I'm in the process of applying for the first respand- responder grant through the DCC, which will pay for Sergeant Brandon Seifert and dispatcher Hillary Moore's training. The grant was already utilized for Lieutenant Tim Trush. I'm requesting approval to send dispatchers Hillary Moore, Lieutenant Tim Trush, Sergeant Brandon Seifert, to emergency medical dispatcher training through ABCO in the amount of nineteen hundred and ten dollars. If approved, we will only be responsible for five hundred and twenty-five dollars if I get approved for the grant.
Council motion being in your court to authorize the approval of nineteen ten to send personnel to EMD.
Make the motion for approval.
Motion by McNabb, is there a second?
Second.
Ladies first, yes. Woods, got it. All right. Any discussion on this matter?
Chief, just for clarification, I think you had said something about this is a requirement for your dispatchers now?
This is something new that I'm doing, and it's in benefit to the, the community. So.
Any other questions or comments for chief? Clerk Tomasic, we'll have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Shoemate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Shoemate?
Yes. Motion carried. Chief, back to you.
Thank you. Action item B on my list is the police department is currently short one prep radio. We have been short since we hired an ordinance officer a long time ago. Officer Jones is currently borrowing a prep from the fire department. Only Motorola and Kenwood radios are compatible with the Downriver Polista radios. The Motorola radio is more expensive than the Kenwood, which the quotes are included in your packets. I would like to stay with Motorola, Motorola radio, as the parts are interchangeable, including microphones, antennas, and batteries. I had also budgeted for the prep radio with my twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six budget. I'm requesting a motion, approval of purchase, the APX six thousand Motorola prep radio for Officer Jones in the amount of six thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Council motion being in your court for the purchase of the radios as described in the action request and chief's report.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the APX six thousand for six thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents.
We have a motion by Walden. Is there a second?
Second.
Ladies first again. Wood.
I think come with steering wheel and tires.
No comment.
Oh, but it is a brick.
Any other discussion?
This is budget, this isn't a budget, this is a budget item. You've already budgeted for this in your budget. This isn't over the top.
Correct, yes, I did, with Amy.
Any further discussion? Clerk Tomasic, we'll have you call roll whenever you're ready.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Shoemate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Shoemate?
Yes. Motion carried. Chief, back to you.
Thank you. As indicated in my news, on July twenty-eighth, the City of Gibraltar experienced a severe storm that damaged two multi-port switches in the basement server room. The damage to the switches caused half the city phones and internet not to work. Exfer, which is our, they maintained the city phones, came out and installed two used temporary switches. The two used switches caused several building issues, including the police department landline stopped recording, knocked the fire department and museum off the server, and John's font, or John Sans' phone is not working. I did receive recommendations from both Exfer, which is also an IT company, and ETS and options. Exfer recommended we purchase two forty-eight port gigabyte switches for the basement. Electronic Tech Solutions recommends that we replace the two blown switches in the basement, as well as two other switches in the basement due to their age. Purchasing the four switches will enhance the security and maintenance to the building. ETS also states that they cannot wire into the Exfer switches and recommends that they install their switches so they can monitor and wirelessly maintain the system. I'm requesting a motion to purchase four UniFi forty-eight port pro-layer-three switches for the basement server room in the amount of five thousand two hundred dollars.
Council motion being in your court, according to the action requested in chief's packet?
Mayor, may I say something before the motion?
Related to insurance?
Yes. I just want to make sure council knows that the chief and Amy are working on this package, and they're going to forward that to our insurance to see if we have a claim here.
I was going to request that information after the motion was.
See, the great minds and leaders here have already gotten in front of that.
Mr. Fonti, I've compiled a list, and it's almost ready.
Thank you, sir. Good flag. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, get it started.
Clerk Tomasic, you have the motion in the, okay, great. Is there a second?
Second.
Council discussion? Clerk Tomasic, roll.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Shoemate?
Yes. Motion carried. Chief, back to you.
Thank you. As indicated in my news, on July twenty-eighth, the City of Gibraltar experienced a severe storm that damaged two multi-port switches in the basement server room. The damage to the switches caused half the city phones and internet not to work. Exfer, which is our, they maintained the city phones, came out and installed two used temporary switches. The two used switches caused several building issues, including the police department landline stopped recording, knocked the fire department and museum off the server, and John's font, or John Sans' phone is not working. I did receive recommendations from both Exfer, which is also an IT company, and ETS and options. Exfer recommended we purchase two forty-eight port gigabyte switches for the basement. Electronic Tech Solutions recommends that we replace the two blown switches in the basement, as well as two other switches in the basement due to their age. Purchasing the four switches will enhance the security and maintenance to the building. ETS also states that they cannot wire into the Exfer switches and recommends that they install their switches so they can monitor and wirelessly maintain the system. I'm requesting a motion to purchase four UniFi forty-eight port pro-layer-three switches for the basement server room in the amount of five thousand two hundred dollars.
Council motion being in your court, according to the action requested in chief's packet?
Mayor, may I say something before the motion?
Related to insurance?
Yes. I just want to make sure council knows that the chief and Amy are working on this package, and they're going to forward that to our insurance to see if we have a claim here.
I was going to request that information after the motion was.
See, the great minds and leaders here have already gotten in front of that.
Mr. Fonti, I've compiled a list, and it's almost ready.
Thank you, sir. Good flag. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, get it started.
Clerk Tomasic, you have the motion in the, okay, great. Is there a second?
Second.
Council discussion? Clerk Tomasic, roll.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Shoemate?
Yes. Motion carried. Chief, anything else on your end?
Thank you. That's the end of my report.
Thanks for everything you and the department are doing.
Sorry, one thing to jump in.
Please.
Katie, did we do the motion for the twenty-nine hundred for the truck? Did we fly past that?
Councilman, it was just a communication. I was just, obviously, I went over the thousand. I just wanted to file the communication with the city.
So you don't need a motion for us to approve that expenditure?
We do, in case I get audited on it, because it's over the purchasing amount, we do need a motion. I was going to say that.
Well, what a great flag. Since we're still in your report, if you don't mind, maybe we can revisit, out of my in context of the motion required.
Yes, I'm requesting a motion from council to approve the estimate of twenty-nine hundred dollars and some change to Guardian Car Care in Trenton for the fix of the two thousand eighteen Chevy Tahoe.
Happy to make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Molnar, second by McNabb. Finance Director McEwen and team. Clerk Molnar, thanks for keeping us honest.
Let's open some discussion on that, because I do have this question. What about our enterprise rental, our enterprise agreement? Does this vehicle not fall into that category?
It was discovered last week that Guardian does not bill to enterprise. They're not an enterprise vendor. But after so many years of dealing with Guardian, I'm very satisfied with the fix on the patrol vehicles. So I'm in the process, I'm going to look for other vendors that are, will accept enterprise. So currently, right now, the twenty-nine hundred dollars, we'd have to cut a check to Guardian Car Care. If Guardian Car Care was a vendor, they would bill enterprise directly, and then enterprise would bill us on our monthly bill.
Okay.
Great flag, though. Thank you. Councilman Cox?
This, this vehicle didn't fall under enterprise. This is an older vehicle.
This is our own vehicle.[1609.51]
in giving us our DPW director, I'm overwhelmed just reading it, because I was on council, and I just, how much work he's doing and all the great work he's doing, it's, it's moving me emotionally, you know, it's like, wow, this is a lot of infrastructure issues that obviously were really backburnered or waiting along, a lot of money, but it's budgeted for him, and thank for the finance director looking over that, and the city treasurer as well, and I think of the, the police department, how well he's doing, and the professionalism, and just taking care of business, so makes me feel a lot better living here. I feel a lot better coming home at night, so just thank you for everything you're all doing, appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks a lot, thank you so much.
Tina Kuzma, three oh four nine five, baby.
Welcome back.
Welcome back. So the deed issue.
Yes, please, you're an expert in that, let me tell us about it.
I know, I was like, do you want me to stop now, or wait?
We got to respect public comments.
Yeah, I know, I know, but in all fairness, I know that, I saw some gears, like, thinking this guy might, you know, have gotten a free land use, but realistically, even, even with him not knowing.
Yeah.
He was maintaining that property, city would be responsible for it, so you got, it's a wash, it's vacant land, you're not getting tax, you're not going to get that much tax base.
Appreciate it.
So in all fairness, I wouldn't go back after him, he's been maintaining it, he's been, I don't know what's there, it's just grass, but regardless, he's been mowing it.
Appreciate it.
But that, that's not just a Wayne County error, that's an assessor error. I don't know, you said that what he was an LLC, like a family member deeded to him.
Yeah, a lot of history there, I don't want to.
Right, so maybe didn't include both parcels on accident, is what I'm guessing. We could have probably done a scribbler affidavit, added that on, and, but ultimately, it's not Wayne County's problem.
I appreciate the clarification there.
Assessor should have caught that, that.
Thank you.
We're not collecting on a parcel, because obviously, he didn't do a lot combination, right? Which would be smart for him not to, because then he's only paying his homestead on.
Appreciate that.
The parcel he's living on. So in all fairness, I think it would be in the city's best interest, in the best interest of the resident, just to give it back, just deed it back.
I appreciate that a lot.
You guys haven't lost anything on that money, you know, it's a, what, a city lot, I'm assuming?
Currently, yeah.
Yeah, just a, what, forty-five and one-twenty?
I don't want to speculate on all the details in front of me.
Yeah, so really, you guys have not, even in ten years, if you do the, the math of what you would have to pay DPW to maintain that, and so on and so forth, you haven't lost any money.
I appreciate that.
And I think it would just be a good gesture to deed it back.
Thank you. Any additional members of public that wish to address council this evening? Council, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Walden, is there a second?
Second.
Second by McNabb, Clerk Tomasic, please call roll.
Cox?
Yep.
McNabb?
Yes.
Molnar?
Yes.
Schumate?
Yes.
Walden?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, everybody, have a wonderful evening.